All right, Commissioners, we're going to call this comprehensive plan workshop to order. Today, we're going to, this is our city workshop on comprehensive plan cycle 1301, and we have 13 amendments, one of which has been withdrawn. So, we will get started by, unless anybody has a comment or a change they'd like to make as to our procedure. Hearing none, we'll move on to Cherie Horn. And Cherie, if you'll just take us through the amendments.
Cherie Bryan.
Bryan.
Sorry, confused you on that one.
Can't do that to me.
Today is our workshop, the city workshop, on this year's 13-1 cycle comprehensive plan amendments. We have 12 amendments, there are 13 shown here with one that was withdrawn. As far as the process goes, we had the planning, or the LPA public hearing last night. They issued recommendations of approval and a couple of additional recommendations on a couple of them. So, that helps going into today to have that planning commission recommendation. From here, we'll move to the county's workshop, and then we will have, that is in a couple of weeks, next week, and then we'll have a joint workshop, then we'll move into the public hearings. And today is really, we will ask that you vote a position, a tentative position, if you feel comfortable doing so. That will serve as a basis for consent agendas on the future agendas. However, you don't need to if you feel that you need additional information. Today's your chance to let staff know if you have any concerns with any of the amendments, if you need additional information, and we'll provide that in the upcoming weeks if you do. With that, unless you have any other questions or thoughts, I'll move into the first amendment, which is Monday Road near Capital Circle Southeast. The applicant on this one is the city of Tallahassee. The application is to change it from activity center to urban residential two. This is actually to correct an issuance, a nonconformity that was created by a land use compliance certificate to allow the applicant to construct a single-family home.
Madam Mayor, pro tempore, I move approval.
Second, total approval.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Number two, West Brevard Street, also residential preservation to central urban. This one is the site which includes the existing Blue Collar Restaurant. Also, this would correct a nonconformity the applicant has requested it. It's also consistent with some changes on the other side, to the east and to the west, where the same designation is applied north of Brevard Street.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
The third one, of course, is withdrawn. Timberlane Road is, then the fourth one, Timberlane Road near Market District. In this case, we have yet another nonconformity that would be corrected by changing the lake protection to suburban for the parcel. Once we evaluated this one, staff felt that the same conditions applied for all of the parcels and were impediments to redevelopment or reinvestment on the parcels since they were mostly redeveloped, or, excuse me, mostly developed at this point. So, staff recommends approving the amendment and also expanding it to include the 34 surrounding properties.
Move approval?
Are there any objections at all from the properties?
We have directly notified everyone, we've received, it was nine responses, and all of them were strongly in favor of the change.
Good. Second, and all in favor?
I'm sorry, just to clarify, staff initiated the extension?
Yes, staff initiated the extension because the same impediments to redevelopment or reinvestment existed on all of the surrounding properties, and this would correct them all.
Good, thank you.
The Water Resources Committee also recommended approval of this one, the county's resource committee.
Yes, saw that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. All right, we're down to number five.
Number five, Woodville Rural Community Expansion. This is the DISC Village currently. Used as a transitional housing, a nonprofit-based therapeutic community. The applicant is requesting to change it to Woodville Rural Community, which would allow, first, it would correct a nonconformity in the 19, early 90s when the comp plan was put in place. This section was included in the proposed urban area, but then after negotiations with TCA, it was contracted, creating this nonconformity. They would like to correct the nonconformity, and also that would allow reinvestment of the property as an assisted living facility. This one, staff is recommending approval, it's a little bit more complicated than the others, in that staff is tying that recommendation for approval to adoption of PUD, which would deal with some of the environmental, possible environmental mitigation issues. It would limit the dwelling units to the maximum currently allowed. As you know, this is inside the Springs Protection Zone, so it's neutral, there must be a density neutral.
Is this their existing site?
Yes, it's their existing site, plus they also own a large piece within the Woodville Rural Community designation as well, so they'll be working on both parcels.
And they're contiguous?
They are contiguous, yes. The PUD would require advanced wastewater treatment within a specified period of time. It would require use of low-impact development standards and address transportation concurrency through that PUD, that would be running concurrently with this application. So, you'd have some idea of the PUD standards prior to the final adoption. Yesterday, the planning commission did recommend approval, but they modified the recommended PUD conditions. They would like to have a clearer number-based phasing rather than leaving it open for the advanced wastewater treatment. They wanted it to kick in when they built 150 units. There's currently a package treatment on-site, so that would allow them to get some capital, which could then be used to fund the advanced wastewater treatment for the future phases. So, they were not in conflict with staff's recommendation, they just wanted some additional detail. They also voted to cap the nonresidential at 85,000, which is what is on-site right now. We have not, staff has not had a chance yet to talk those additional, talk about those additional changes with the applicant, so we feel like we can talk that through and bring that back to you at a future date. But the planning commission did recommend approval, we would like the opportunity to talk through those, see if there would be any problems with the applicant before specifically recommending that.
If we adopt staff's recommendation, that is without those conditions?
At this point, yes, and again, this is just a tentative.
Position.
Position.
I move staff's recommendation.
Second.
Moved and seconded, before we vote, I'd like to bring up a couple of points. First of all, I completely agree with you that you need more time to really vet the conditions that the planning commission put on there. When I heard this from you, my reaction was that this is really something that should be addressed in the PUD, and their wastewater treatment plan is not capable of, even though they have one, it's not capable of treating 150 homes, only about 85. So, somewhere, there's a, you know, there's some missing homes there, and I certainly don't want to put them in the position of ever having to put any more subject tanks in at any point, for any reason. So, I think those are items that you need to take up in a separate conversation and get back to us further down the process, we've got several months to work on this. The other thing that I've been emailing back and forth with the planning staff about is the fact that LID, low-impact development, quote-unquote, is recommended in addition to enhance traditional stormwater management in the Springs Protection Zone, and yet, there are no ordinances that actually define, I mean, low-impact development is a term, but it includes certain practices, and those are not clearly defined in an ordinance. The definition, the only thing that exists is a definition in the comprehensive plan that basically says that this will increase infiltration and slow runoff, things like that, which are really objectives, they're not practices as to how these folks can get from here to there. So, basically, we're handing off the demand to a developer that he is to go forward to do X, and yet, not giving the kind of guidance that is available. I mean, low-impact development practices are not nebulous, they're specific. And so, I'd encourage you all to begin at some point, and I see that we have Wayne Teter here, but at some point, you all are going to have to set up some standards as to what people are supposed to do with this mandate that they're being given. And that's it, all right. With that, we've got a motion and a second to approve, give this tentative approval. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Okay, number six.
Number six is a request for a change along Jackson Bluff Road and Ausley Street for the corners of that intersection. It is currently the site of some multifamily housing, as well as a former grocery store now being used as a thrift store, also dealing with some nonconformities as a result of the thrift store. The applicant is looking to change that from, or has requested to change it from urban residential two to the university transition, that would allow some mixed use in this corridor or in this node. Staff is recommending approval of this one based on a few factors. One, the West Pensacola Sector Plan did request or direct higher-intensity development along this corridor for the future. And also, it would allow for some neighborhood commercial in proximity to a good deal of housing and multifamily housing. This is the one with the more, I believe this is the only one that the planning commission did not support unanimously. We had first a motion to deny it, which failed, then we had another motion to approve it, which was passed at four to two.
Move approval?
Second.
And before we vote, I just want to say that this is a huge opportunity. I mean, Jackson Bluff is really an area that transsects residential upon residential upon residential upon residential, and yet, it's a perfect area to look forward to some new development, and I'm really happy to see someone come forward with a project that's of this size, that, you know, has shown some commitment to stepping up to the plate, so.
Is the applicant in ownership of all four parcels?
Carolyn Bibler is the applicant, acting as the agent, she has, she's representing four different property owners that have all joined in on this application.
It's an intersection.
Madam Mayor, pro tempore, I lived in landmark apartments, and they were old then when I was at college, and I was speaking to one of my counterparts as mayor years ago, who lived in them probably 15 years before I was over there.
Oh, my goodness. That old.
So, this is, this is a great opportunity to take some properties that have synergy between them and see them go into something great.
I agree.
And I'm glad that we're beyond the argument of, when we first had these type of land use decisions, we had to contend with whether or not an area would be a college area or not. We're now beyond that.
Definitely.
We have, we understand that that's the use that would be in that area, and people are talking together. And we're found that the people that are non-college students that live in the vicinity like the redevelopment that's happening rather than dislike it, so I think this is going to be a good story.
I do too. So, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Moving on to number seven.
Number seven is a bit of a repeat from last cycle. As you recall, Marshall Cassidy had requested changing the property, two parcels along Thomasville Road that were the site of Hot Head Salon, to change them from residential preservation to neighborhood boundary. He was not in compliance with the PILAC at that time as part of the negotiations between the neighborhood and also coming to compliance with the PILAC. He ended up reapplying this cycle. He is now in compliance with the previously existing land use compliance requirements, including a fence and had to do with some parking issues, closing a drive into the neighborhood. The neighborhood is accepted as what has the legal department. I know you received, I don't know if all of you received, but I know at least some of you received some information from one of the neighborhood residents saying that they had some concerns about noise and height and some other compatibility issues. At this point, it appears we've worked through most of those issues. She still has, as of today, concerns about height. Staff, she's, I believe, requesting one or two-story height limit on the neighborhood boundary parcels that are facing Thomasville. The existing residential preservation zoning allows three stories. As staff, we support the continuance of using three, allowing three stories there because the applicant could, at this moment, go and build three-story townhomes. So, limiting a nonresidential use to a lower height limit is not consistent with the infill and redevelopment policies for the mobility district and the urban area. But, that's just a side story because I know you were getting emails. Staff is recommending approval, and the neighborhood is not objecting to that approval at this point.
Move approval?
Second. Is there a plan to, I see the tenant has changed, is the goal to repurpose what's on that facility? Or do you know?
Well, Brian, correct me if I'm incorrect on anything, the PILAC allows the continuance of the existing use, but with the rezoning or the comp plan amendment, another office-type use could go in there, so.
Sure, the new tenant, so it's the existing use that's there or whatever the existing use is?
I don't, they moved.
Yeah, they moved, it's a new tenant now.
Oh, have they filled it already?
It's a new tenant.
I'm not aware of a new tenant.
And so, is it a continuation of the existing use or?
There's a hair braiding salon in there.
Now.
That's what I've heard, yes.
So, it can continue to be a salon? And that's all, that's the only use outside of the neighborhood boundary? I thought that this just shows you that our citizens, when they are intimately involved, really bring so much depth to the table and the discussions. And in this case, the letter specifically was addressing the fact that the multimodal district standards are different, they expand, in a sense, the neighborhood boundary land use. And so, I came in with a lot of questions today about which one is supreme over the other, and I thought that you all did a good job of, I mean, I went over this with Linda Hudson this morning, and basically, the NVO zoning district intent and permitted uses established are not affected by the MMTD code. So, and then you did this comparison, and I can see, what do you mean by almost? I mean, it's almost similar, mostly similar, what does mostly similar mean?
I can respond to that. I did the analysis, I was asked to do a comparison, and I was trying to avoid getting way deep into the woods on that one, or into the weeds, rather. So, if it was roughly comparable, then it was mostly comparable. If it was just completely off the charts, then I tried to go into it a little bit more detail. We can do, I think, a more thorough analysis, but it does take time to do that because you're comparing MMTD, NVO, and RP, RP2, actually.
Well, the basic bottom line, though, is that they can put offices in there, and that's it, correct?
Correct.
And I think that.
And the hair salon.
And the hair salon because of the previously existing land use compliance.
Can they build the townhomes that you referenced earlier? So, it's office or residential, and that's it, period? Okay, well, I think that's going to make a lot of people sleep better at night.
Would, I know the applicant owns that other stretch of property next to it. Would it normally be you all's recommendation to include all three of those parcels? Or the property, I think the applicant, one that, I don't know what shape that is.
Kind of upside-down bullet.
Triangle-looking?
Correct, as part of the agreement where the neighborhood, the city, and the owner sat down with the judge and went through all of this to come up with the agreement, part of that was that the applicant dropped that parcel out of seeking this change.
Got it.
Yes, I'm glad to see that. So, we can vote on this, all in favor? Do we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. At this point, I would like to stop and say that if we're going to use board docs for this, please make separate agenda insertions so that we can go from one to the other because I'm spending a lot of time, yeah, exactly. I'm spending a lot of time trying to find, just getting through to the right place. So, that would be my suggestion. Please write that down. Thank you. All right, number eight.
This one is another cleanup amendment, Fred George Road and Old Bainbridge Road. The city has initiated this one to clean up a remnant that was left after the, after the recension of the Huntington Woods DRI, which was, for the most part, built out. The DRI allowed the use of a convenience store, currently it's a Chevron store, convenience store and gas station. It was consistent with the DRI, once the DRI was rescinded, it was no longer. The residential preservation land use then made it nonconforming, so this will just simply clean that up.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, next is our Steve Braid policy, number nine.
Yes, we are all finished with the map amendments, we're going to move into the next five, which are text amendments. This was initiated by the Board of County Commissioners after the meetings and discussions on the county-wide minimum environmental standards. Part of what came out of that was a recommendation to remove the slopes requirement inside the USA. Staff, planning staff moved forward that and has been coordinating closely with both the city and the county growth management. You'll see, included as attachments are the draft city and county land development regulations. While the requirements for the slopes preservation be removed from the comp plan, there would still be, there would still be certain features preserved through the land development regulations. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Brian. Just, we're not voting on the land development regulations today or during this cycle. They're simply there so that you could see how they would be implemented in the future, near future.
I don't have anything to add other than answer any questions that you may have.
Move approval?
It's pretty extraordinary.
No, we're not done yet.
You said we're not there yet.
Did you second?
Yes.
All right, well, I will say that I'm going to be voting against this. This is a complete, I don't think that when the public voted to change the charter to establish minimum standards, that they quite expected for us to get rid of the standards. And what this does is to completely remove any protection of slopes at any, to any degree. The change goes from pretty macro down to zero, and I can get on board of minimizing the standard or the scope of the protection, but I cannot be supportive of a complete elimination of any protection at all. What I would like to get to is a point where we just back this off to leave the protected area, that portion, within a hundred feet of a secondary significant feature or preservation feature, so that if there is no preservation feature involved, secondary preservation feature like a water course, then it's not an issue. But if there is one, then leave that hundred feet, in the comprehensive plan, ordinances are much more flexible than the comprehensive plan. It's only a hundred feet, and with us sitting here looking at soil that's full of phosphorus with, which is a nutrient, and under mandate from the federal government to clean up nutrient pollution from our waters, including phosphorus, this is no time to back into the zero protection level, and that's why I'm opposed to this amendment as it stands today.
I look forward to addressing it in the LDRs and the original discussion. I take your point, Commissioner, about the LDRs are easier to, are much more nimble to change than the comprehensive plan, but I think that's part of the reason why we need it out of the comprehensive plan, just because it would, on the, on the occasion where it needs to be changed, it could be. But I may join you before this is all over, but I look forward to the LDR discussion.
Well, that's fine, I understand. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No.
And just to summarize, the LDRs do essentially do that.
Oh, I read it, I mean.
So the make certain you.
It's the comp plan.
You wanted to see those in the comp plan.
I just don't want to go from, my reasoning is that, to go from, I don't, I don't feel that this reflects what folks expect of us, so. All right, number, we're on number ten.
This is a, a change in updating of the definitions, also as a result of the county-wide minimum environmental standards, the city and the county codes have certain definitions, and we're just now making them consistent with the comp plan.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, next one is number eleven.
Well, this one is an amendment to the mobility element and land use elements. A couple of cycles ago, if you'll recall, we updated, completely rewrote the mobility element. In doing that, there were some footnotes in the land use element that also needed to be corrected to have the correct cross-reference, so this is merely a technical change to update those footnotes.
Good.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Commissioner Gillimer, you in favor of this motion?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, all opposed, nobody. All right, moving on to number twelve, addition of Paul Russell Road Extension to Future Right-of-Way Needs Map.
Yes, periodically, we are required to reevaluate the right-of-way needs map and add or delete roads as necessary. This one is to request adding the Paul Russell Road Extension into the future right-of-way needs map.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Next and final, will any access at Thornton Road, number thirteen.
This one, a little bit of context for this one, as a result of the Thornton Road Extension, staff has been working over the past couple of years, various city staff, both planning and utilities, with the Friends of Micasuki Greenways and with the state staff to move the, to reach a consensus on moving the existing approved crossing at Arrendale to Thornton, so we would only have that one cut in the greenway. There's a number of, of land trades involved with that change, so those details have been worked out, and we don't have final state approval yet, but it's in the process and it looks favorable, so we are moving this through.
Move staff recommendations.
Is there a chance that the state, I mean, what's the timing on the state? Could we approve this prior to the state taking action, or? The staff recommendation is actually to have the effective date of this tied to the state approval, so that we don't get stuck in a situation where the city owns the land and we've now lost access.
Right.
Second.
Very good. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Commissioners, for your attention to these details. Is anything, anybody else wants to bring up?
Sorry that I was tardy. I didn't know it was a quorum.
You made it for it when you got here.
Hey, was this painless, or what?
Yeah.
Thank you, once a year.
It's because we're the dynamic trio.
Oh, there we go.
Ready to go.
Well, thank you very much for the staffing, appreciate it, and we'll look forward to our next meeting on this topic.
Yes, that'll be the joint.
All adjourned.
Get ready for the slope.
Or certified information systems auditor, and eight years of auditing, accounting, governmental fiscal administration, organizational management, or related experience, two years of which must have been at the senior management level or higher, or an equivalent combination of training and experience.